Good morning. It's Tuesday, the last day of May, May 31st, 9:30 a.m. If you would please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask you a question?
No.
Can somebody explain to me how this works?
Excuse me, this is our commissar's meeting.
Who's in charge?
I'm president of the board. If someone, if you have a specific question, be glad to talk to you after the meeting, or we have an agenda there.
President. Well, I guess I came from Palmer and we had a mayor and councilman, and I don't know the difference between a senate commissioner and a mayor.
Understood. Will we be glad to talk to you after the meeting? Right now, we're in official session. Sure, sure, okay. All right, sure, be glad to talk to you, I'm sorry. Like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen. I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Thank you. The minute's May 24th. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes. All right. Also, open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. We do publish our resolutions well in advance and as well as, as of, well, yesterday would have been on the website. So, and if anybody has any comments, be glad to hear from you. If not, we'll go ahead and proceed, and the public will have the opportunity after our resolutions to address this regarding any, anything that they have an interest in. So, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and start off with the County Engineers Department. Dan Becker, thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning again.
Hopefully I have these right today. I've got five, or four resolutions for your consideration. First resolution is the necessity to close Rafton Road between Columbia and Liverpool Drive. The second is the determination to close Station Road between Center and West Law. The third resolution is approving the annual assessment for the Nottingham Estates subdivision. And the fourth resolution is approving the final plan for the same subdivision, not the Anderson Estates.
I'll make a motion for the four resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on the resolutions? Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right.
I don't see Jeremy.
I don't see Jeremy. Well, okay. Who's going to be presenting? Okay, all right. Well, we'll jump up to Scott Miller, County Administrator.
Can I go ahead and just present the few that I have also?
Sure.
Sure, please.
So, the sanitary resolution is awarding the 2021 home sewage system replacement project contracts, A, B, and C. This is the Wood Investment Property LLC, doing business as an American. Contract A amount is $79,458. Contract B is $66,238. And contract C is for $16,491. And the first resolution for the county administrator is authorize a request for proposals. This is for hosted way-based telephone system. Second resolution is accepting proposals in one contract for Cortland Gallery benches. This is for the Medina County Courthouse project. We received two proposals. One was from Sodder Courtland Furniture for $90,066.09. The other was for Imperial Woodworks, Inc. for $64,420. The difference in cost is Sodder's had a contoured back, and Imperial Woodworks was a straight back. And so we went with the 64, we thought $30,000 difference was worth a straight back. And the third resolution, and final resolution, is approving agreement with whoever, Murphy, Fox, and Kupinski, for engineering, architectural, and engineering services. This is for the Heatherhedge project for EMA. And they will be billing at an hourly rate, depending on if it's an architect, engineer, or a tech, to an amount not to exceed $40,000, plus reimbursable costs, estimate about $500.
First, I will make a motion to approve the resolution for sanitary.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the three resolutions from County Admin.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
I just want to say that the architect resolution was discussed at the EMA Board last week.
Okay, and the Board is okay with the proceeding as outlined?
Yes.
All right, very good. And I presume then you will be monitoring that activity of the architect in those services?
Yes.
Okay, got it, very good. Okay, roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. All right. Holly Muren, Human Resources Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hire at County Home, four rate increases, one at Job and Family Services, one in maintenance, one at County Home, and one at Office for Older Adults. One lateral class change at Job and Family Services, two resignations, one at sanitary and one in maintenance. Second resolution is approving a table of organization for the Medina County Storm Water Management Department. Third resolution is approving, is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Office for Older Adults.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
All right, Amy Lyon-Galvin, Assistant County Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I only have four resolutions.
Wow.
Your consideration this morning. The first is amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The second is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts in Medina County's software fund revenue line item. The third is allowing expenses of county officials. And the fourth is approving claims for the week in the amount of $965,776.45.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
I think we have this one.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, Denise Testa, or Planning Department.
She's not on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
So I'm presenting a resolution authorizing a change order to one of our CDB, to our Community Development Block Grant demolition project in Brunswick Hills Township. The reason for this change order is because we were awarded essentially $35,000 to demolish a house and clean up a parcel. As a result of our bidding process, it came in about $16,000 under the $35,000. So we were able to actually complete more demolition and cleanup than we had originally anticipated because if we don't use this money, we have to send it back to the state. And that's the reason for a very large change order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Yeah, so just to clarify.
Yes.
The scope of the demolition was expanded greatly to include the fuel oil tank
Exactly.
and septic and stuff that was not included in the original bid
Exactly, and sometimes when, right, and when we demolish, and when we're embedded in a demolition, sometimes you find things that you didn't know were there.
Mm-hmm.
But again, you know, as a result of the low bid, we expanded that scope.
Yep. All right, very good. And the remaining cost for the demolition, this took care of the entire cost?
It did.
Yeah, okay.
It did. Yes, we were awarded $35,000, and we spent the $34,185.
Super, great. Roll call, please. Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
All right. Now we'll open this up for public comment. This is second, Mr. Ver... Ma'am, did you want to say something?
Oh, I have a lot to say. You might want to say, you can laugh.
Okay, well then I'll go ahead and defer to Mr. Frederick, that's fine.
I have a lot to say.
Okay, well then, well, you get five minutes, like he gets five minutes, so, okay. Okay, Mr. Frederick?
Mark Frederick, 6146 West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio, United States of America, continent North America, planet Earth, Milky Way solar system, it ain't hard to find me, even the Martian's good if you wanted. I've been having a little discussion with the county for about 10 years now. And I'd like to say that I was hibernating for about 25 years out there on Smith Road, not bothering anybody. And about 10 years ago, some people in the county engineers office, to be exact, I'll time you too, so don't cheat out your time, that they decided it'd be a wise idea to poke the bear. Well, congratulations, you woke me up. And here I am. Now, I heard it since last week that this whole thing about the salt brine is inducing panic. And I like to say that's not inducing panic, that's educating the public. Steve is a teacher, you ought to be happy we're trying to educate these people, trying to keep them from getting killed. You know, I got a permanent teaching license, one of the last few made in Ohio. It's good until I die, which I know for some of you won't be soon enough. But the Medina County Commissioners in the past, and I'm going back to the Acton Beacon Journal of May 29th, 1985, page V3. The Medina County Commissioners Tuesday voted to prohibit spraying of brine on county roads and private property. The Commissioners were acting on two requests, one by Medina Supply in Medina, and the other by Ralph Harley of Harrisville Township and Ohio Well Driller. And if you go find the article, I'm sure you could, it's on the record that the county Commissioners John Hap, Ralph Berry, and all of them decided back 37 years ago. That can't be right.
It's not.
I'm sure they're watching, I guarantee they are.
Give you latitude.
They could have shot me.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to say that the stance should not have changed. Times have changed, so on, so forth, and I know we have a lot of fricking and fracking and all this stuff with the gas and oil and all. And I was kind of unaware of it last week. But being a good teacher, I did my homework. And I found out a few things about this. The real problem is, and I want two resolutions out of Medina County Commissioners, is there is currently in the Ohio State House, Ohio Senate Bill 282, and Ohio Senate Bill 171. And basically what these bills are doing is trying to make it legal to sell and spread this radioactive salt brine all over the state of Ohio. And I would also like to add further down, this is from November 16th, 2020, not that long ago, the Ohio Turnpike Commission is discontinuing the use of oil and gas waste, stating, quote, "Due to the issues and complaints that ODOT and the Commissioners are having with regard to the potential health risks of Aqua Salina", which is a marketing name for oil and gas waste, "we decided not to use it." Now, if Ohio Turnpike's not going to use it, I don't see why Medina County should allow it. And by the way, why am I doing this? Because I'm fighting for my grandchildren and your kids and your grandchildren. You start spreading this radioactive waste around, they're dead. Radium-226 and 228 are bone-seeking, cancer-causing radioactive substances that mimic calcium in the body, so they're absorbed into your bones. This may harm generations of children, you know? I might not be around too long, but my grandkids might. Your grandkids might. It's time to do something. Inactivity is just as bad as doing the wrong thing. So I'm suggesting that you do something. I just want to know why the county would continue to permit the poisoning of our population. So I'm asking two things. One, that Medina County Commissioners pass a resolution opposing House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171, currently cooking in Ohio and Columbus. I emailed you, suggested resolutions that I'm sure you could adjust whatever you need to do, but basically that's a good template for you guys to follow, I hope. And I would also ask that you reiterate and reinforce what Medina County Commissioners stated 37 years ago, that they will not be using toxic brine on any road or private property, which would be like, I don't know, church parking lots and so on, grocery store parking lots. So I'm asking, will you give these two resolutions to our population? The answer is either yes or no. And no is the wrong answer. If I look, you're sort of as I've ever been, huh? Still got the mailbox out there.
Ma'am, did you want to speak?
I mean to be...
And if you please, just go ahead and state your name and address for the record. And likewise, you'll be given five minutes as well.
Can I give you a picture?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, you may, and we can share it.
I would like this back.
Okay, all right.
This is the, an area view, and this is the gentleman that gave it to us, this Dan.
Will Hoyt, right, okay.
This is...
Ma'am, ma'am, would you go up?
You need to go up more, please? That's fine, you can go ahead and just talk about it, and then you can show us afterwards, all right? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, my name is Pat Nivotny. I live at 1480 Sharon Copy Road, and I need help. And I'm going to cry because I haven't slept.
Okay.
We are drowning in water. Everything is ruined. We moved here five years ago. Nobody told us that this was swamp land. Our basement floods, we have thrown out thousands of dollars. We have lost personal videotapes that can never be replaced. And I cannot get anybody to give me any satisfaction to help us with this water. We live on Sharon Copy, and I don't know if you're familiar with the road, but across from us, there is a little creek that comes down the road, brings the runoff water, comes underneath. We have a retention pond and a creek that is supposed to maintain this water. These retention ponds and these creeks go all the way down our street, and they dump in, they're supposed to dump into Wolf Creek, which right now they're not because of the problems. They have never been maintained. They are full of debris, they are full of dead trees, they are full of woods. I was told by the county, we do not maintain ponds and creeks on private property. You have to be assessed, it's put on your taxes to get that done, okay? We have, if you look at the picture, there's an empty lot next door to mine, okay? That lot has been for sale since 1995. It has been sold many times, and it has not been built on it. The reason is, that is our retention pond. There's trees, there's shrubs, there's land. That is holding in the extra water, so it does not branch out to us. Several months ago, a gentleman bought that piece of property for $55,000. Now, if you know what property Medina County is going for, you will say, boy, did he get a deal. Well, it depends on who you're talking to. Our deal is, and I have neighbors that are willing to come with me, if you allow this gentleman to start building on this piece of property, he's going to take those trees and those bushes up. He's going to dig a basement. Where is that water going to go? Where do you think it's going to go? It's going to go into my front, it's going to go into my back, and it's going to go into our sides. You're adding more water to somebody that is already swimming. I have three chickens that have a kayak. Our driveway floods. Our, I mean, everything floods when it rains, when the snow melts. We are the only people on... A lady said to me last week, she said, "Don't you like hearing the rain at 3 o'clock in the morning?" When I hear the rain at 3 o'clock in the morning, you know what I think? Oh, shit, the basement's flooded. I got to go down with waders on. And we have a sump pump that runs 24 hours a day. We have another portable pump that helps pump water out when it gets to a certain level. We have two dehumidifiers raining 24 hours a day. Do you know what our electric bill is? Take a guess. For running all this equipment, I am scared to death we're going to get mold in that basement. And then who's going to pay to clean, who's going to pay $5,000 to clean up that mold out of our basement? And are you going to house us up, our three chickens and our dog, for the month they're cleaning that basement out? The people on the other side bought that house in March. He knew nothing about the water. He was out there yesterday, and he said, "Where's all this water coming from?" I said, "Look in your creek." I am asking, if, if you cannot deny the permit, then somebody has to put a water retention system around all four sides of this property to maintain that water when he builds. Now, the county's not going to pay for that, are they? So the gentleman that bought that piece of property, are you going to tell him, "Listen, buddy, got about another $60,000, $70,000 in water retention. It can't go back because there's an industrial parkway behind us." In order, in order to drain that water out back, you have to go to those companies back there, and you have to get a legal document that they're going to house your water. Those companies are all flooded with water. You go down there, and you ask them, "Are you going to house my water for me?" Guess what they're going to say to you? "You can't go up front because the creek cannot handle it because our retention ponds and our creeks are flooded." So where's that water going to go? It's going to go in our yard. And when you, what's going to go on? It's going to go this way onto the sides, into my neighbor who has a seven-year-old daughter, and she's not going to be able to play in the backyard because it is underwater. My little chickens in their kayak, I can't get back to my pole barn. We have a brand-new, beautiful Amish pole barn that's flooded. And it's full of mud. I do not know what to do. I have talked to these people. I was told by Dan last Monday, we had a ni... He's very nice. We had a nice two-hour meeting, we've had the water department now. And he said, right now, no decisions have been made, and no permits have been issued. Now, we have this guy next to us who's getting a little bit ticked at us for trying to get this, but I'm asking, please, help us stop this water. I don't know who, I don't know, like I said, when they told me to come to this meeting, I thought, well, should I wear a suit? I mean, is this a formal meeting? And I said to my husband, I said, "I have no idea how this system works. We came from Palmer, we had a mayor and councilman." And when they said, "Why don't you go to the Commissioners' meeting?", I said, "Well, what can they do?" I need, I've been to, we live in Sharon Circle, by the way. I've been to, I think the policeman knows me there. We've been to their, I've been to their meetings. They fall back to the county because the county has jurisdiction. So you are the county. I will bring you homemade chocolate chip cookies. I will bring you blue eggs from my, blue fresh eggs from my three little old chickens that are, that can't free-range when the water is over, and they're mad. They howl at the top of their lungs, they're mad. What do I do? Who's going to help me? Who's going to either stop this building or make this gentleman put a water retention? I've heard it, I've heard it called a French drain, and I've also heard it called a water retention. I don't, I don't know the difference, okay? Who's, who's going to help me? Who's going to help the people? I am a taxpayer, I am a owner. All these people in Sharon Copy bought these homes in Medina. It was the dream, we're going to live. The guy next door to us, he's got a wife and five kids, he said, "You don't know how proud we are to live in Medina." Well, wait, buddy, wait till the first rain. You tell me how proud you are to live in Medina. I mean, who can help me? What, tell me where to go? Do I, I said to Dan, I said, "Should I go to the, should I go to the TV and tell them my stories?" Well, let's not go there yet. Who's going to help me? Can you help me? Can you stop this water from flooding us out? Just one last thing I'll tell you, and this is really... We had two boxes of videotapes down in the basement that were sitting on a panel. These tapes are irreplaceable. They were pictures of our nephew. And my nephew was my husband's pride and joy. These videotapes were ruined. I have two of them with me. They cannot be replaced. My husband is devastated. He is absolutely devastated. I took these videotapes to every place I could think of. I went online to see if they could be their VCR so they can't be replaced. They're sitting down in our basement, and he won't get rid of them. And I don't know what to tell him because it was my, I wanted to move to Medina. He was happy in Palmer, and I said, "Oh, no, let's go out, we'll get two acres of property. We'll have chickens, we'll have a pole barn." And he lost the most precious thing to him, besides me, I hope, these videotapes. Please, please, help us stop this water. I can show you pictures on my phone of the flooding that we get. And if you build or you don't retain this water, we are going to have twice as much water on our property that we have now. What are we going to do? What do we do? If you can't stop it, who can? Who can help us? We, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what to say. I just, I keep asking you to please help us. Please either stop that building or... And my understanding is, from the county is, you cannot retain one side, you have to do all four sides. You cannot say, "We'll do the one on your side." Just appease us. You can't. That water has got to go evenly through that system. I, probably my five minutes are up, and I am sorry.
That's all right, that's okay.
Tell me what to do. Tell me where to go. Tell me how can I get help? Before this gentleman puts one shovel into that dirt, this water problem needs to be solved. And there are a lot of people, everywhere I go, I hear stories, "Oh, you know, we have had water for four..." Lady Ambonito who's fighting a $500 electric building on pumps moving water. I don't want to be that person. I don't want, I don't, I want to be proud to live in Medina. I want to be able to say, "I live in Medina County. I love my little circle at Sharon Township, the parade yesterday." I want to be able to look at people and say, "I'm proud to live in Medina." What do I say now? We have water. Look at our, I can't, I can't have a picnic in the back because it's flooded. Or you can't come over today. Well, we can't cut the grass because we have to cut one row to see if it's flooded. You know, the grass is this high because it's flooded in the back. We can't cut it. My husband buys this big Ford tractor. Little boy's dreaming, he's going to cut the grass well. The tractor's stuck, you know? We got to get it out when it dries up. I, I am, I cannot tell you, I love, I love this little circle. I absolutely, I cooled at the little quilt shop over here. We come down and eat all the time, and we go home to water. We go home to Medina County's water problem. I don't want to do that anymore. I don't. I want to go to the next township meeting and say, "Hey, they're going to help us with the water problem."
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I, you've taken, it seems, the, I mean, there's no fault of yours involved.
It's not.
And we realize that, and you've taken the best actions possible, going to the township and also meeting with Dan Will Hoyt with the Highway Engineers Office. Will, I'll sit down with them, I'm liaison to the department, I'll go ahead and sit down. If you could leave your contact information for us, and I'll sit down with him and see what we can, what we can do. I am not sure, we have certain parameters. We have joint, I'll just say, shared governance with the township in many regards.
They're in total agreement.
And, well, and so we'll be sitting down, and this sounds like a neighborhood problem. The area has been flooding, I know for, after, you showed me the map, I'm familiar that this has been decades issue with flooding. And, and so this is something, I'll sit down with Dan and see what we can do in terms of being able to address this.
Why haven't you addressed it if you know it's a problem?
Well, we know that, that it's been, there's many areas the counties have had drainage issues, and over the time, as the county permits, has, has the authority and the ability with development be able to not only do, as you, in meeting with Dan, I'm sure he described to you how they approach it, they take a look at a general area, how they develop it, and as development comes in, make sure that the water is retained. And, and obviously, when you have these peak events, that basically, that they're slowly, the water is going out. We, there are certain limitations as to what the county can do as, as it's gone for years. But I, I'll be glad to sit down.
I just, I know where this is going. I know where this is going.
Well, okay, okay, but, you know, the Board, we're listening, we're paying attention. We'll be talking with our department head. We talk, actually forming a brand-new, actually, one of our resolutions today, we adopted as organization of a stormwater, basically, it ought to be called Stormwater and Flooding Department because many often, these issues is just not to do new development with stormwater, but also dealing with the flooding issue. We are, as a Board, taking flooding and taking these issues seriously throughout the county. And I think long-term, and there's, this is not the only township that has these, as development occurs, the opportunity for us to be able to do something in a major way to, to reduce the incidence of flooding. And so we, I'm committing you, we are committing resources, we're organizing now, we're going to be looking and see what we can do.
My only problem is I'm on a time constraint.
Sure.
I understand. I have this gentleman that's sitting there ready to build.
Well, we still.
And no retention system?
Well, I'll sit down with Dan and, and find out where we're at on that, on, on the permitting, what we can do and what possibly we might be able to do to help mitigate the flood. We have, we, over, over the last, you know, I was commissioner for 18 years, part of the state rep and now back, and I can tell you, over the decades, we have spent a lot of money and received a lot of federal dollars, as well as state dollars, to help mitigate and reduce the flooding as a major issue within the county. Doesn't mean that we don't have areas, but we have been trying to address areas that, like over in Chippewa and, and Gloria Glens and those, those other areas where, where it is just habitual, it just, I'll just say, not only seasonal, but just consistently flooding, we have been trying to address where we can, when we have the opportunity.
Just to tell you real quick, you brought up Chippewa.
Yeah.
Did you know that Eric, they have been working with the homes on Chippewa? They're putting in, it's called an Aboh program. You people designed it. It's re, it's planting trees and bushes on our property that are, the roots go deep. They have several homes, he told me to go over to Chippewa. There are several homes over there that have been working with them and have made a significance difference. So we are right now in the process, we ordered bushes and trees for peteys to put those onto our property because he said, and a special grass, he said that it is working on Chippewa and you have some kind of demonstration over here where we can go see, you have some kind of garden. And Sharon Township said that they had Eric there before we moved in and they are having, without going into a lot of cost, this program seems to be working.
Actually, Soil and Water, Medina County Soil and Water Conservation District is funded by not only the state, but also Medina County.
Yeah.
And so we're aware, we're very supportive of those programs. And you're right, there's a, there's a lot to do, but there's a lot being done to address this.
Yeah.
And I can assure you that I'll, I'll be talking to Dan a little bit later and we'll see.
I'm sorry.
And we'll be in further communication.
But like I said, we lived in Parma, we had this wonderful mayor and we had all these councilmen, you had a problem, the councilmen would walk up and down the street. We come out here and I said, how does this work? I have no idea. I said, who's in charge? I have no idea.
It's a little bit different form of government, but you'll get used to it, I'm sure. All right. Well, thank you.
I am sorry to pick up someone's.
Thank you. That's right, we will be in touch, okay?
We want to be proud to stand with the guy. I don't want to say I have a water problem.
I understand. Right, understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
I guess not.
Okay, that's all right. Discussion session. All right, Scott? You have anything? Amy? Holly? Denise, anything further? Ty, did you have anything you wanted to?
Well, we had emailed the commissioners Friday. We had to have a special meeting in Lafayette to pass the resolution for your consideration to either extend Fetschko's maintenance bond or.
Do you want, you want to come forward here? I'm, I'm sorry, for the, for the people that are, and for, since we do live, because anything you were saying, I was going to have to restate. So at this point, I'll let you go ahead.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Go ahead. So Friday, we had a special meeting.
By wave introduction.
Yeah, yeah.
Lafayette Township.
Lafayette Township trustee.
Okay, thank you.
So we've had some issues with the road and Wedgewood Estates. And Fetschko had agreed to replace a bunch of sections, that was poor workmanship. And we, I had met with them, with our service director and county inspector back in April. And, and I had just drove by again this morning and there's still cones in one road, but it looks like they may be done, but I haven't heard back from the county inspector to see if they had done a final walkthrough and the bond is due today. So it's up to your consideration what you want to do.
So commissioners, I just saw that at work this morning.
Yeah.
I sent a note that can be.
Okay, all right. So you referred it to Andy for him to, to review and, okay. Is it an action that we take?
I think so, and if he does.
He does? He, so, Dan, you'll be able to follow up on this?
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask for an extension on that.
Okay.
But I know we wanted extension.
Okay.
And then, did you give them a timeframe on that time? How long you want?
Well, they said, oh, we'll have it done by the time it comes due.
So it's not?
It's not, but maybe we're within a day or two. So my recommendation may be a week extension just to make sure that we can get the walkthrough done and approved.
Okay.
So Ty, I called John Fetschko Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, sometime last week, and, and talked to him. Did he follow up with the township at all?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So at this point, the Highway Engineers Office will be notifying him that, that it'll be extended performance bond in compliance with making the repairs necessary from that project.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe he contacted the highway department, I don't know, but.
Well, yeah, actually, when we were in the Brian company, I said, actually, we have to have a senior certification, so we need to have it so we don't have to stop running and see.
Dan, I think I already gave that to you this morning. Okay, it's in the packet?
And I, and I guess I have it.
Okay, well, good.
I kind of figured the timeline would fall like that.
Okay, well, thank you for being here and pushing this along, make sure we've got that, got that covered. Okay, very good. But thanks, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, anybody else?
Colleen.
Colleen?
Um.
Oh, I wanted to, yeah. I did receive a call from the president of the Bar Association. They're, they formed a committee to look at assigned council rates. I guess the last time the commissioners had raised them was a couple of years ago. I think it was 220, 2020, when I was in legislature. And I, they are asking for a reconsideration of the, reevaluation of those, given, I guess, that the rates of other counties have been going up. I know in the legislature, when we increase the funding, it's not on a percentage basis, it's on a dollar amount projected. And the big, large concern, many of the legislature, I'll just, this goes back four years or even, even before that, the big concern is that the state would increase the level of support, that the counties would just go ahead and bump up the assigned council rates and therefore you're not really gaining much because you're gaining a whole lot less because everybody's paying more. And a number of counties held, held the line. I know Medina County made some adjustments. Others, I'll just say, decided to go ahead and increase, increase those rates. But they've asked to set up a meeting with the, the board and just wanted to bring that for discussion, how we want to proceed with meeting with that committee.
Yeah, I, I think discussions with the Bar Association would be excellent and, and it would be great to get a recommendation from them on what direction they would like to head as far as the number. As far as the counties that touch us, we're at $60 an hour. Cuyahoga County is also at $60 an hour, but Lorraine, Ashland, Wayne, and Summit are at $75 an hour. So those are immediate surrounding areas, the numbers out there.
And I would tell you that the, those counties, with the exception of Ashland, all increased their rates to $75 because of the.
What's the state increase? The, yeah.
Well, I mean, we, we looked at that as well. I think, I think our hourly rate was like $40 an hour.
Forty, it was forty.
Fifty in court and, which is atrociously low.
Right.
I, I would say. And, and I think the, the $60 an hour was an effort to, to write that to a, an extent with the consideration that we would look at it again in the future, so.
So.
Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate to look at it.
So, so Bill, you would work with Scott in, in meeting with the, the committee then?
Sure.
Okay, very good. That's, I'm good with that.
Good.
All right, good, thank you. And I guess that they've got, one of the committee members is on vacation next week or two, so it'll be later in, in June, so we can address it. All right, good. Do you have anything?
Yes, yes. I, I gave you all a copy of a email from Nowaka and some attachments regarding trying to get expanded rail service in the state of Ohio, especially Amtrak around Cleveland. The, the trains come at very early morning hours, either east or west, and, and it's really not conducive to significant utilization, in my opinion, of, of rail service. And I, I have taken Amtrak a number of places and, and am a fan of Amtrak and rail passenger service in general. And so I would ask that we consider sending a letter to the governor's office asking for support. So I just offered that for your all consideration.
I, I would agree.
I would agree too.
Yeah, I think they ought to evaluate and, and study it. And I know in the past, about a couple decades ago, they, they looked at commuter rail within just the region. But I, I think the benefit of a rail is much more long-range than it is short.
Right.
Short range. And in this case, we look at those corridors and what can be done. Given that the, I'll, I'll just say, obviously, the prior centuries, the amount of land that was given to the railroad companies for development, that they end up retaining, high value indicates to me that, yeah, there is a public interest in making sure that it still is providing not just freight service, but also some passenger service where it makes sense.
Yeah, and, and as gas prices go up, and I suspect they're going to continue, I, I think rail service is a good alternative.
Agreed, for long range.
Long range.
Okay, good. So you'll, you'll author that and we'll just go ahead and sign it.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Anything else?
Nope.
Colleen?
I'm good.
Okay. I did want to bring up.
Oh, wait, one more thing. We, I don't even know if we talked about it. We got the notification that the August 2 election will be covered by the state.
Oh, I saw, I saw that email.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, Nancy Abbott representing the, the Board of Elections, they had received notification for, not only from, from LaRose, but also the, the Association of Election Officials, that the state will be covering, the General Assembly will be covering the full cost of that special election in August. And they're just looking for the vehicle or the, the bill this week for them to put that appropriate amount in. So, which is good news that we don't have to pay for any of it.
Right, very good news.
And that, and that the, at least the Board of Elections is not going to be asking us for more money for this election than we're asking for other things, I'm sure. So with that, we did receive late, late notice last, last night, actually, about the draft capital projects with the county community projects. Medina County, about $2.775 million in various projects, ODNR, a lot of parks and so forth. But the big one for us was our ask for the Medina County Emergency Housing Shelter. And right now, the draft and it's going through the hearing process today and hopefully through both the House and the Senate tomorrow of a $450,000. Likewise, there's, in the draft, there's, there's, which does impact us since they are, we do help fund them, is the Historical Society, their McDowell Phillips House Museum also receiving a grant of $175,000. So that's good news that some of those projects are, are being funded. So I forwarded that to you. The other item I wanted to bring up from, from last week, we had, and Mr. Frederick had brought up the issues regarding Senate Bill 171 and House Bill 281, I believe it is, and the resolutions that are, that were, had been passed in 1985. As you know, our clerk Rhonda had looked at those actual specific resolutions rather than the newspaper account. The newspaper account, I'm not faulting Akron Beacon Journal or any other prior newspaper source, but it's always as good as, fun as a historian is you check multiple sources. Certainly the original one being the resolutions themselves. The resolutions themselves involve just the application of the brine on one specific property, Medina Supply Property. The second one, as you know, talked about application elsewhere. The, as Commissioner Seacrest at the time added, that this did not affect any of the political subdivisions, the municipalities and so forth regarding the application of brine. And I will point out, as, as well as, you know, Commissioner Hudson pointed out, there's no public entity applying brine, this oil waste brine in Medina County. There are some in other areas, there you can go and they, they track them. Over the last number of years, the application of oil waste brine has been declining tremendously. There's a map that shows Chatham at one time, but over the last decade, I think they ended up zero barrels a year. So they're, they're, I think they were maybe the last holdout in some of, some of that application. And that was maybe for, for a decade or two ago, maybe that was for dust more than it was for ice, I don't know. But at that point in time, there's nobody in this county and many of the counties, even the ones touching us, it's continuing to, to reduce. So quite accurately, the state agencies have come on board, the Ohio Turnpike Commission has come on board of not applying, applying this. I'll point out too, that at the time, the commissioners at the, thought that the best, best things to do with the, with the brine disposal was for deep injection wells. We know the, the same groups now that are approaching us and saying that we ought to prohibit this are the ones that are against actually deep injection disposal for oil well brine. And even the Athens County Commissioners, who have been referred here, are not only opposed to the deep injection oil, the brine, but they also, are also against defracking. So every board of commissioners reflects their constituency and of course, their, their consciences as, as individuals. And boards of commissioners work independently, but we also work with other boards of commissioners through the County Commissioners Association. There's two entities that, in those two bills, that have passed resolutions in opposition, Franklin County and Athens County. This is an action, and Franklin County and Athens County both have seats on the CCL Board of Trustees. This is one that the Board of Trustees of the CCL are monitoring this bill. This one has been such heavy pushback that frankly, it's not likely to go forward. At, what we've found in the past is, it's all about timing too. When the ODNR and, and likewise, the state agencies have pushed back, the governor has indicated he's pushing back on, on this legislation. At this point, it makes little sense to keep beating a dead horse. We would be better, better positioned and I believe that, you know, there's been a lot of testimony against, we will, ought to hold up the CCL board, we meet monthly, I think maybe we have one month off, but we'll be monitoring this and if this is an issue, I know Franklin County and Athens County will be bringing it up to the board for us to take action, to take a position. It is a matter of, of, at this point, is making sure that you don't, you take the appropriate shots at the appropriate time. We can be against these two bills, but if this proposal finds its way into another bill, your resolutions against those two bills mean very little. So what you have to do is you have to monitor it, we have to evaluate it and see if it does get added as amendment, we will take swift action in opposition. No doubt, as, as the CCL Board of Trustees would take action against it, should it be kind of hidden as a, an amendment someplace. So in terms of legislative process, it makes little sense to start, like I said, beating a dead horse. We can do it, but nobody's going to read it, they're not having any hearings. I can just tell you, as I've been legislator for six years, you send a letter about a bill that's not even having a hearing, there's not a single, there are very few members that are actually going to read that. It's not even going to be read into the record until there's a hearing on it. So at this point, it makes little sense for us to take any kind of action regarding that. And then I'll just say, point out that the petitions that were submitted to us, we did evaluate them. Every signature is important, but we likewise know that, that you, when you see 170 signatures, knowing that, okay, that some of them, actually 51 were signed online, a majority of those were out of state. We have a number of individuals likewise that sign more than once. So, okay, it doesn't mean that we value less, it's just that we do take that into consideration. We do value the opinions of people that do sign this, but likewise, you just have to take a look and say, okay, of that 170, how many really were, you know, local and with those concerns? And I'm not going to, like I said, undervalue those people's opinions on this, but I likewise want to make sure that we get it on the record as to the number of individuals that, that did sign that. And lastly, I'll point out, there's, there's tradition that townships have, that whenever somebody's running for public office and they're coming there and speaking about a issue, they introduce themselves as running for public office, so that they know that they're running for public office. Two of the five people that were here last week are actually running for county office. And I think that helps evaluate, I guess, some of the discussion and then, but I think that's a good tradition, it's a good thing to have. And in township trustees, that happens all the time. You have somebody running for county commissioner or county recorder, they'll speak up and they'll identify them as such and be able to answer any questions or inquiry. So I just think that full disclosure is always a good thing when people are coming and, and talking about some of the issues. So I just wanted to make those comments. So anyway, anything else for discussion, county? All right, I.
Question?
Well, the, I, we're, we're, does this pertain to, we're in the discussion period? Yes, go ahead.
Do we have a timeline on the appraisal of the professional buildings? My contract buyers are calling this week.
Scott? No, we don't. You can talk to Scott afterwards too, and kind of get a better idea. All right. We do have a request for executive session.
I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee and pending litigation.
Second. Roll call please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Himbley? Yes. We don't have any further plans for other actions after this, we convene for a live session and of course adjourn for the day. We don't see you, have a good week and enjoy the good weather while we have it.
You need me? I'll call you.[535.16]
It is ten fifty-one AM. We're back from executive session. Do I have a motion?
I have my question, Georgia.
Second. Rule call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Have a good week!
That clock is, uh...